Good evening and thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled November 13th Board Meeting. At this time, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisually with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like us to share a moment of silence for McKenna Marie Pauli, a Valley Middle School of STEM student who recently passed away. Thank you. All right, School Board, I will call the meeting to order. We will be working from a revised agenda this evening. The item that was on reports fiscal year 2022-23 audit was moved from reports to other action on the agenda. With that, is there a motion to approve the revised agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin and a second from Bianca. All those in favor of approving the revised agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The agenda passes on a 6-0 vote. All right. We have no recognition from the School Board today, so I will turn it over for Superintendent Krieger for Superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Thank you. First, I would like to congratulate our three incumbent board members Jackie Magnuson, Corey Johnson, and Suchan Isaacs on winning reelection to the School Board last week, and Anna Williams on being elected to her first term on the board in the November 7th School Board election. All four will begin their new four-year terms on January 1st and will take the oath of office on January 8th at the regular School Board meeting. I would also like to congratulate the city of Apple Valley on passage of both parks referendum questions for improvements to parks, trails, and recreational facilities. We are fortunate to live and work in a community that understands the value of quality education, city services, and recreational opportunities, and is willing to invest in these for the betterment of our community. And several congratulations. Congratulations to the Rosemont High School Marching Band on winning the Youth and Music Marching Band Championships and finishing fifth at the superregional event in St. Louis last month. The Eastview High School Marching Band was also one of the 32 bands that participated in the Youth and Music Championships, finishing fifth overall. Eastview student Sam Kenny received the Outstanding Performance Award for his performances in both the preliminary and final rounds. Congratulations to the Eagan High School volleyball team on qualifying for and competing in last week's Class 4A state tournament. Congratulations and good luck to our district students who qualified for the girls' swimming and diving state tournament that will be held at the University of Minnesota later this week. Congratulations and good luck to our Dakota United Hawks adapted soccer teams who will be competing in their respective state tournaments later this week at Stillwater Area High School. Later this evening, the Board will be asked to approve resolutions designating the week of November 13th to the 17th Clerical and Secretarial Employees Appreciation Week and Maintenance Support Employees Appreciation Week in District 196. There are more than 875 clerical and secretarial employees who fill a variety of important positions and provide services that are essential for the day-to-day operation of our schools in this district. There are also more than 200 maintenance support employees. They protect the community's investment in our schools and help to provide safe, secure, and clean environments that are conducive to teaching and learning. At this time, I would like to ask any clerical, secretarial, and maintenance support employees who are with us this evening to stand and be recognized. Thank you for being here on behalf of all the other hundreds of employees. We appreciate it. And lastly, I would like to invite Director of Special Education Janet Fimmman to the podium to introduce our new Health Services Coordinator, Mary Langworthy.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am pleased to introduce Mary Langworthy, our new Health Services Coordinator. Mary has more than 25 years of experience in nursing, including 13 years in public education. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in nursing and a minor in child development from North Dakota State University, and a Master's in education with an emphasis on mental health practice in schools from the University of Missouri. As Health Services Coordinator for District 196, Mary will be responsible for providing leadership and support for school nurses to ensure a comprehensive, effective, and sustainable health services program that enhances student learning across the district. Additionally, sorry, my papers are not turning. Additionally, Mary will be supporting the continued development of systemic mental and physical health programming to ensure our students receive the necessary support to thrive in their academic and personal lives. Mary's experience in nursing and education, along with her passion for her work, makes her an excellent fit for this position. I'm confident that she will make a positive impact on our district and our students. Please join me in welcoming Mary to our district. Thank you.
Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Krieger, I'm on my fourth week here. I'm really, really excited. I've had the great opportunity to be in three other school districts coming from St. Paul Public Schools where I got to work with Director Vernig on many initiatives. Really happy to be here and apply everything I've learned, good and bad, and what worked well and what didn't, and do better for the students and the community here in the Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan area. Really excited to be here. Thank you very much.
She is amazing. We're very, very lucky. So welcome.
Awesome. All right. Is that then your comments? Yeah. All right. Next on the agenda is our special communication request. We have two speakers signed up for special communication requests this evening. Those who would like to sign up for special communication requests must submit a form at least five days in advance of the meeting. Speakers are allowed up to four minutes to speak on a topic, and it's important to remember that the Board -- this is a time for Board members to listen. They don't respond, and the views expressed in the special communication request do not necessarily reflect the views of the district or the School Board. We do use a timer for special communication requests. Those that are speaking at the podium, you'll see a little button there with some three lights. Green means you can start. Amber means you have about 30 seconds left, and a red means please wrap up your comments. At right now, I would like to welcome Kate Reed and Kira -- oh, Kira Favre. If I said your name wrong, please correct me. You'll get four minutes total to speak tonight. If you want to just introduce yourselves, then feel free to start your comments.
Thank you so much, School Board members and Superintendent. Hi, my name is Kate Reed. I'm a senior at Rosemont High School.
I'm Kira Favre, and I'm a junior at Rosemont. And we're here today as representatives of Rosemont High School's Environmental Science Club to advocate for the integration of electric school buses into District 196. Our school district has the opportunity to decrease its harmful effects on both the environment and student health. Through the EPA Clean School Bus Program, District 196 is able to receive rebates to fund the purchase of zero emission electric school buses. Transportation is the number-one source of greenhouse gas emissions, and currently, District 196 is contributing to these harmful emissions through the use of diesel buses. A single diesel school bus emits 90 tons of CO2 pollution in its lifetime, a fact with serious environmental and health consequences. And although there are filters on our school buses to reduce emissions, which we're very grateful for and believe it's amazing you guys are already working to move us towards green, we think we can do even better. The small particulate matter filled exhaust that inhabits our buses can cause cancers, cardiovascular, and respiratory disease, putting students' health at risk. By moving to electric buses, we can pursue the possibility of increasing safety for our students both on and off the bus. From a student's perspective, it's extremely scary to think that these toxins are constantly entering our bodies, along with our friends, siblings, and even bus drivers. I'm a senior now and drive me and my sister to school every morning, but I was once in kindergarten riding the bus to and from school every day. I was once a first grader riding the school bus to and from school every day. I was once a second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, and so on, riding the school bus to and from school every day. And every day, along with the vast majority of District 196 students, I was inhaling toxins. Although I no longer ride the bus to and from school, thousands of kids in our district do. It's for these kids who we want a safer future for, not just ourselves. For the kids who will continue to attend ISD 196 schools and ride its buses, we find it crucial to move towards implementing electric buses. And it's not just us who want to see this positive change. The students and faculty at our school agree with us that we should move towards electric school buses. In fact, we created a petition and received 60 signatures from students and faculty members in support of electric buses for District 196. On the District 196 strategic roadmap, the very first item on the list of core values is student-centered. All decisions are centered on what is best for students, and we believe that electric buses will do just that, achieve what is best for our students. So we're here today to ask you to formally support the transition to zero emission electric school buses in District 196 in order to protect not only the environment, but to continue prioritizing and protecting the health of students, just like you've always done for us. Thank you.
Excellent. Next up, I would like to welcome Stacy Miller to the podium, our next speaker for special communication requests.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. Stacy Miller here. I'm a resident of Eagan and the mother of young adults, 22 and 24, and I'm here to support students like Kate and Kira in their request to electrify our bus transportation system. I also am here to thank you for doing your part to apply last year when this program first opened from the EPA and for following up with me to let me know. I have a summary here prepared by volunteers from MN 350 of the applications that came in from Minnesota and the awards that were made. I'll just pass this around. And I was pleased to see that your name was among them. And this year, we're doing away with the lottery system that EPA had last year, and this is a competitive grant opportunity. I'm hoping that you will apply again. And this is, of course, important for all the reasons that Kate and Kira said, that we want to clean up the environment, we want to address climate, we want a healthier environment for kids. I similarly recall being young and in a rural district growing up, and all the toxins and things you can just smell, and it kind of can make you sick. So there are lots of reasons to invest in electric school buses. I'm hoping that this year will be successful. We have, through January 31st, pulled applications together, and I'd just like to ask that you consider doing so again, and also for your support in hearing the public interest in this important topic. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda tonight. We have 16 items on our consent agenda tonight. Are there any items -- oh, I'm sorry, we have 17 items, 17 items on our consent agenda tonight. Are there any items that Board members would like to remove from the consent? Seeing none, going over consent agenda, we have the minutes of the October 9th, 2023 regular School Board meeting, minutes of the November 6th, 2023 special School Board meeting, gifts, advertising revenue grants, treasures report for September 2023, summary of claims for September 2023, schedule of investments for September 2023, revenues and expenditures report for September 2023, Wells Fargo OPEB Trust Fund Certificate of Incumbency, fuel purchase personnel, pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees, agreement for student teaching experience, University of North Dakota, settlement of special education due process hearing, Minnesota State High School League Foundation grants, and resolution to dissolve Boys Alpine Ski Co-op between Apple Valley and Rosemont High Schools. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joel and a second by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approving the consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next up, we are going to move into reports, enrollment projections for fiscal year 2024-25, and I'd like to welcome Christopher to the podium.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the Board, and our public stakeholders. I'm interim Director of Finance and Operations, Christopher Young-Groffschel. Enrollment drives a lot of what we do, and in terms of the impact, the students who are here, those who are coming, this is the bread and butter of what we are about. The projection we are presenting here is for the coming fiscal year, so 2025, which is just around the corner for some of us. To get to how -- what that number is for us, what we start with is a committee. We are a large district, 19, soon to be 20 elementary buildings, six middle, four comprehensive high schools, and then we have an ALC and FCS building as well. And so to get to what our enrollment number is going to be, it is not something that a few of us do. We pull in principals, cabinet members, and then those coordinators and finance individuals who are involved with budget process come together and review scenarios. And these are based on information we gather from the county, so buts and debts within the district as far as the zip codes that we serve, planned construction, development, and then we also look at historical trends. So these are all inputs that come into this committee of individuals and, given the different lenses that we have, try to figure out what the number would be. So we play around with various scenarios, as I indicated. These numbers then go to cabinet, and based on the conversations that I had at those levels, we come to the School Board with this report. So looking into 2025, we are projecting an enrollment of 28,805 students. So the way we're breaking this down is 575 in the early childhood area, 11,932 in the K-5 grades, so elementary grades, our 6, 7, 8 graders, middle school at 6,616, and finally, our high school at 9,682. So this is what we're anticipating for 2025. Last month, I presented the School Board with our October 1, 2023 numbers. So if we are comparing these numbers that we're presenting here today with what our experience was last October, we're anticipating that we're showing a slight decline in enrollment. So 150 in the K-12 student range, and then when we add in early childhood, 156 students fewer, which accounts for about 0.54%. Just remind the Board, the public, our October 1, 2023 numbers, we are 28,961 students, and what we're projecting for October of 2024, which will be our 24-25 school year, 28,805 students. This graph represents our historical trends. I'm starting back in 2015, all the way through to just after the pandemic, we were showing a slight increase, gradual increase, in the number of students that we are serving. We evened out over the last two years as far as the post-pandemic, so 2021, 22, and then last year, or this year, and then going into next year, a slight reduction is what we're anticipating in the number of students that we are serving. What the committee is really focused on when we are trying to project our numbers is we want to be pragmatic. We want to be conservative in our approach in terms of, we don't want to be overly optimistic. We don't want to set up a budget which we cannot sustain, and at the same time, we don't want to have numbers that are too few so that come October and students are in session, we are scrambling to find stuff. So what this chart gives is that comparison between what our projected numbers are and our actual. And we've been teetering right around. When we presented it in October, we were at 0.3% of a deviation between what our projections were and what our actual performance was. So this is what we're anticipating again happening for the coming fiscal year, that we're not going to veer that far off because we do not want to saddle our buildings with either too few stuff to be able to meet the needs of our students, and also, we don't want to saddle them with either too much number of students as far as what they can educate in an appropriate manner. So to summarize, we are showing a slight decline in enrollment for K-12 going into the future years. We continue to see increases in early childhood and our center-based students. So when you look at the numbers that we have compared to pre-referendum, our use of space, so for these two age groups, so early childhood and special education, the center-based special education, the space needs that these students represent, it's such that we do not see this needing us to pull back from our planned development in terms of buildings. So we don't anticipate that change happening. We are going to use these projections into the future as we plan for financial, as we go through our financial plan, and then these are the same numbers that will be derived for our budget and budget allocation to buildings. In addition to the presentation, we have two other documents that are attached. So the first one gives you a school-by-school representation of the numbers that we are anticipating, and then you also have additional detail in terms of the numbers that we're anticipating into the future. I will pause there and see if there's any clarification that I maybe would provide based on what I have provided so far.
Before we move into the Q and A, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from Board members?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Christopher, it's slightly maybe tangentially related to this, but one of the things that, you know, we pride ourselves for is to have a district that's growing, that's vibrant. And although a growing district presents its own sets of challenges, I'd rather have those than a district that's losing enrollment.
Right.
So with respect to that question, is there a way for us to get a projection of a same type for the state in general so we can index to see, are we maintaining share, losing share? Because it could be one way to sort of anticipate if our increases and decreases are in comparison to the state trend as well.
I think what we can do and what we do report on is past trends. So right now, all districts are doing the exact same thing. We are all projecting what we anticipate our FY 24-25 enrollment is going to be. What we do know right now is at least the initial numbers that have been presented to the state as far as what all of us, all districts that report what their October 1 child count is. So we could provide that information and give it feedback, you know, at a different session. What I do know anecdotally is, post-pandemic is that the number of students within the state, what has been reported from the Department of Ed is that there has been a slight decline in enrollment statewide. I don't have the exact percentage of what that number would be, but that's something that we can definitely follow up on.
And I guess my question was related to, is there a projection like this that happens at the state level? I don't think I'm asking you to maybe provide that per se, but if you are aware of any projection that happens like this at a state level, that may be kind of good information just to kind of source as well.
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Christopher? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a quick question, Christopher. Thank you. I mean, this is real exciting. You said it. This is the bread and butter of all that we do.
Right.
My question is that it's more like a high level in a way that with the anticipated, what do you see as far as next year projections, enrollment projections, with the, you know, what would fiscal impact or what would it be policy impact that we should be paying attention to? That's the number one. And the other one is that point of clarification, that one of the stuff that you attach to here, the number for the total high school there is, I think I raised it, there's a 196 online students?
Right.
I don't think that should matter with the online. It's just that you have 112. That's not the students that we dropped out of the enrollment. They should be making part of the total number, right? I mean, if you look at, for the high school, you have 196 is online high school. So the online high school, we used to do one back during COVID, but we don't, you know, it shows as a, it doesn't show as an active number, but it shows in the total. So there should be, you know, it's not students that are, I think it is the students that are part of the enrollment, not the students that we lost. Am I reading it right?
Right. So the online, the page that you're referring to has, by building, what we're anticipating. So the district does have an online program that's only for the high school, and so what we're projecting there would be for just the online high school, so not the students that we lost. So we did close, starting this fiscal year, the K-8 online program, but our 912 online school is still active.
Is still active.
Yes.
How do they impact the enrollment rate number?
It does add to our number. So what this program is doing is if we have an online school and there are students or families for which the online program is what they choose because of, you know, different status as far as where the families or those particular students need, then we don't, if they were to leave the system, they would be served somewhere else. If they stay within the system, then we do generate those state dollars and we get to serve them within our program. The financial impact, so this is to your first question. So when we look at the 28,805 students, what that does for us is as we plan out what's coming for next year, we know what our revenue is going to be based on those students. Our budgeting process, so this is what we allocate to buildings in terms of FTE and supplies that will be going to the buildings, knowing and getting us close to that number now makes sure that come October 1, we're not making too big adjustments. So that'll be the impact. If we get it to, if we end up with, say, 28,000 instead of 28,800, then those 800 students would have a negative impact. So we want to try and stay as close to that number as possible, which is what the committee process tries to help us do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Christopher? Yeah, Bianca.
So you came last month, and we talked a little bit about the charter school that opened up.
Yep.
And, you know, as somebody who's been on the Budget Advisory Council and the levies, right, we were hearing, oh, the numbers are, our enrollment is projected to be pretty high, and now we're seeing a little bit of a drop, right? So we, I think the district has done a great job of pivoting and retooling and continually evaluating the enrollment and the numbers. We've had Hazel in multiple times.
Right.
So I would just like to suggest that we have a workshop on this so we could look at it a little more deeply, where those students are, what's causing the impact, what are our projections, you know, is Hazel projecting that we plateau or go down? And as a parent of a Deerwood family, when my eighth grader started, that was a booming class of 600, and now, you know, you look at the numbers and it's 456, you know, and you can feel that in the building. So are those, you know, I just, I think it would be nice to have a workshop to look at enrollment a little more in detail.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Christopher?
We're gonna definitely do that, yes.
Paul.
All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Next up, we will move into old business, and I would like to welcome our General Counsel, Jill Coyle, to the podium to go over Administrative Regulation 507.2 AR, Student Fees and Fines.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. So first, Regulation 507.2 AR is our regulation that details all of the various student fees and fines that we charge in the district. Due to increased costs to the district, the administration is before you tonight recommending a change to paragraphs 3.4.1 and 3.4.3.4 of the regulation. The proposed changes add a $75 fee to the cost participating in the co-curricular activity of Alpine skiing, and the fee will apply to all grade levels, and it will help to cover increased costs associated with team use of the ski hill. Participating students will continue to be responsible for the cost of their lift ticket in addition to the $75 fee. This is an old business. This is an old business item tonight and the administration seeks your approval.
And before we go into comment, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So move second.
Motion by Jackie and a second by Bianca. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Excellent. Pretty straightforward and second reading, so thank you very much. We have a motion by Jackie, second by Bianca. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote.
Thank you.
Next up, I would like to welcome Steve Trone to the podium to go over 2024-25 middle school and high school course revisions.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board and Superintendent Krieger. I'm here this evening to present an overview of the proposed middle school and high school course revisions for 2024-25. This is part of an annual cycle. I enjoy this opportunity each year to share some examples of the extensive opportunities available for our students and also represent the collaborative efforts at the building and district level that combined to contribute to our evolving course offerings. As District 196 students progress through their academic year, they have a wide range of opportunities laying a foundation for their future. As students move from elementary to middle school and onto high school, the range of course offerings continues to grow. As students advance within the high school grades, they have several opportunities to deepen study in specific content areas and they may also choose to explore a significant variety of elective areas. Each year, I have an opportunity to collaborate with teachers, building and district administrators in the teaching and learning department and facilitate a process to revise and develop course offerings and result in, again, an evolving and wide range of curricular opportunities. Our course offerings each year reflect the story of what is happening in education at the local, state, and national levels. Many factors shape proposed course offerings. One such factor is the academic content standards, which are developed at the state level through the Minnesota Department of Education. Districts are responsible for placing the content standards in specific courses and aligning those courses. Sometimes the standards do not change, but where the content is specifically in a course may shift. Also, at times, these courses may be slightly restructured or renamed to better reflect course content and standards. As you know, the cumulative goal of all of our offerings or course offerings is successful preparation for our students' future. Shifting trends in the career marketplace in addition to demands of post-secondary education both have an impact on course offerings. Our students continue to have a number of opportunities to earn college credit while receiving high school credit at the same time by taking college in the schools, advanced placement, and other dual credit options. These courses continue to help parents in our district save thousands of tuition dollars while also helping to ensure our students are college-ready. And we continue to look for ways to expand meaningful opportunities in this fashion. For 2024-25, an example of the college credit opportunities that is new includes the proposed addition of a CIS, or College in the Schools Creative Problem-Solving Course at Rosemont High School, which will provide credit from the University of Minnesota. Career preparation pathways, specialized programs, and partnerships with business or higher ed institutions also continue to grow. In addition, real world, excuse me, real world challenges and specific student needs and interests drive our courses offerings as well. So a few examples for the 24-25 school year being proposed. A film production course at Eastview High School. The addition of a Level 2 American Sign Language elective at Rosemont High School. Also, building on the success and student interest of an Eagan High School course from this past year, both Apple Valley and Eastview High School are proposing the addition of a sports officiating elective course, which provides an opportunity to help meet the demand for local athletic officials. And you may have seen a recent news story with WCCO on the success of the course at Eagan High School this current year. In addition, building upon the success of the unified physical education courses across the district the past few years, there's a proposal at Eagan High School to expand that and add Unified Choir as a course offering. Unified courses provide a unique opportunity for regular education students to work and learn alongside with center-based special education students in the same adaptive course, fostering a rich inclusive environment and based on a national model. You will also notice proposals in your board package for new intensive theme offerings at the School for Environmental Studies, excuse me, School for Environmental Studies, such as Anthropology at the Zoo. And there's also one middle school course offering being proposed, where Valley Middle School of STEM is proposing a new elective for eighth-grade students, which would introduce students to the field of teaching and aligns with some of our high school career pathway opportunities in that same vein. So again, each year, staff members at each high school and middle school move through a process to determine what courses a school will propose to offer. Throughout this process, our schools are supported by the teaching and learning department and our schools work together as a team, sharing ideas of what works. As you can see on the detailed course list in your board packet, a number of new courses are being proposed to be added and some courses are proposed to be restructured. And again, it's easy to note the collaboration as you can see the replication of courses, especially elective courses across our district that gradually takes place. Each course must progress through a review process before approval, including the involvement of teachers, principals, the teaching and learning department, and review by the superintendent's cabinet. The board serves as the final step in that approval process. Tonight is the first reading and in your board packet, you have provided a detailed list of the range of offerings and changes being proposed. I'm scheduled to return with this agenda item as old business at the December 11th board meeting and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very much. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
I have one.
Suchan.
So Steve, as always, this is one of an area that's of particular interest to me because it always demonstrates 196's ability to be, you know, in tune and in step with contemporary ways of relevant education. So this is great. What I'm really glad to see is that there is a reflection of our AAA philosophy in all of these new courses, that is arts, academics, and athletics. And even though athletics is in the form of the coaching type of a piece, it is still an important piece because as an athlete myself, being able to coach does impact one's understanding of the game. Hopefully then this makes them a better athlete as well. So it's really great to see that AAA philosophy being reflected as well as just repositioning of some current courses as well. So really good job by the team to do this.
It's a very good point to point out the AAA philosophy and one of our values in our district.
Excellent. Jackie?
I echo everything Suchan said. The other thing I like about when you bring these courses is not only they're well thought out, that we have the rationale, we have the established goals, we have the essential questions. So you can walk through, you can even see on some of them what they're going to use for their performance tasks. Well, how do we know a student is learning and what do we expect them to learn? And to me, that's just, it's just fantastic to walk through and you can really get a good sense of what classes we're putting in and the thought that's gone in the classes behind them. So thank everybody, thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out. And again, I'm giving a quick summary on the slides and presentation, but yeah, the detailed package shows the amount of thought and work that goes into these course proposals.
It wasn't just like, oh, well, I'm going to teach this class and I'm going to get this book and this is what I'm going to do. There's really deep thought put into these classes and I know that, you know, all the schools work together and, but this is always amazing to me, the work that goes behind these classes.
Joel.
Also, for the 20th and final time, I'm going to say that this is probably my favorite report of the year because it just really shows how vibrant and alive our curriculum is and that we respond to the needs of the students and, you know, what's happening in the real world and preparing them for the world beyond high school. And so I find that it's so exciting and that we're doing this and again, there's so many courses here that I really want to take.
Me as well.
But just a couple that I want to pull out and that you had, a couple that you had mentioned as well. First of all, the Spanish for Heritage Learners 3 and 4 at Eastview, I'm very glad to see that expanding. The American Sign Language at Rosemont, to see that expanding as well. Those are both programs that I think are very good and they're for specific audiences, but definitely a need within our community. The Unified Choir, I think, is just such a phenomenal idea, you know, kudos to whoever decided to bring that over from athletics into choir and I hope we can, in the future, see that expanded into other areas because it's just such a wonderful idea. And then the sports officiating is great on so many levels because number one, the students can put it into practice immediately and get jobs, doing summer employment, doing this. But also, I think, and it's, it kind of wasn't mentioned in the news report, but just thinking about this as a former coach, I think this will make them better athletes and better participants on the team because number one, they'll know the rules better, which is a good thing. But number two, they'll really have more empathy for where the officials are coming from and why they might be making calls that they're making. And I think that, you know, even if these students never actually become officials, they will become better athletes and better participants because of these classes. So just, I'm very excited, very pleased to see these classes coming.
Thank you. I'm as well. And I guess one last thing I can add to, our foundation progresses elementary, middle school, high school, those core courses build those skills, right? And obviously what we highlight here is a lot of the opportunities at the high school level and the electives and the variety of areas of study, but goes without saying too, is just to compliment throughout our system, K-12, of building those skills so students can take advantage of all these opportunities.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will see you back on December 11th for our next board meeting for old business.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving into the other action portion of our agenda, I would like to welcome Danny Duchene to the podium to introduce our, those that are speaking, I guess, for the fiscal year 2022 and 23 audit report.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Krieger, and our District 196 community. My name is Danny Duchene, interim coordinator of finance here in District 196. We are pleased to present the 2022-23 fiscal year audit, which includes a clean, unmodified opinion. Before introducing tonight's audit presenter, I'd like to take a moment and simply acknowledge the scale and scope each audit season requires. District 196 has been working since last March with the team from Aid Bailey on the 2022-23 audit, culminating in tonight's reports and presentation. The audit is a months-long, extensive, and time-consuming adventure that relies on the teamwork, collaboration, and communication of many individuals and departments within our district. Personally, I'd like to thank Adam Lloyd Controller and Christopher Nyanga Ropchat, interim director of finance and operations, who helped lead this teamwork, collaboration, and communication process here within our district. We'd also would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge and thank the many non-finance departments in our district who are vital to the specific areas of the audit. The teams in human resources, community education, nutrition services, facilities, transportation, special education, and central receiving, along with our state and federal programs who go through a single audit every single year. We'd also like to thank anybody else in our district who might fulfill one of those one-off requests that we just need on a whim. Everybody in our district has been great and supportive. Lastly, a thank you to our team from Aid Bailey for their work and partnership during this audit season. It's my pleasure to now introduce Jamie Fay, partner at Aid Bailey, to present the 2022-23 annual financial audit for District 196.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger. Good evening, my name is Jamie Fay. As Danny said, I want to echo anything Danny said about their team. Everyone was excellent to work with. I'm an auditor, so I love auditing. It is all that I do. So to me, it's every single day, but I know it comes in and shakes everything up. So we really appreciate all the hard work that everybody did. So tonight, we are not going to go through this whole book. We are going to go through some pictures, some graphs, some kind of more high-level information about the audit to tell you a little bit about the district. So when we're talking about the district tonight, we're talking about June 30, 2023 fiscal year end. So that would be July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. So just keep that in mind. So we went through, as Danny said, we started talking in March and we started talking about what is the district doing, how is it going, what things do we need to do? And then we started working on planning. We came on site to the district for a little bit of time. We really shook things up and asked for different details. And then that really culminated in the audit report being issued today. Perfect. So today, we got the audit report issued. I brought a whole box of papers. So if you want to read the whole document, we have it, you have it online, but it's signed and sealed and delivered. So we're really going to talk about the details. So first of all, when we get hired to do an audit of the financial statements, what we do is we come in and give an opinion on if the financial statements are materially accurate or not. We provided the district with a clean, unmodified opinion, which is what you want, that's what you've gotten in the past. This means that we came in and we tested a handful of items. We tested a bunch of different calculations and said, hey, we think this balance should be X because of these things. Is it? And if it's not, let's explain it. So we went through a number of different questions and answers. We asked their team a whole bunch of things that probably are second nature to the district, but we just have to verify them. So through that whole process, we gave that unmodified opinion. What an audit is not is looking at every single transaction. If we did that, we would just be a member of your staff and that wouldn't be beneficial by any means. So that is the financial statement piece of your audit. The second piece of the audit is over the federal funds. So anytime a government spends more than $750,000 of federal money, you have to get this separate kind of compliance-based audit, really to look at those federal dollars and say, are they spending it the way they should? Are they filing the reports the way they should? Are the numbers right? Are the invoices right? Is somebody looking at it all? So we did test three programs through the federal money. So the district spent about $30.9 million in federal dollars. So through a calculation, we have to determine which programs of that we test, what we look at, kind of different factors. This year, we ended up testing ESAR, which is a COVID funding. We tested child nutrition, so think school lunch, and then we tested special ed, which everyone knows what that is. So we gave an opinion over the federal funds as well. That was a clean, unmodified opinion. So that's great news as well. So those are the opinions. Those are the big questions that we get when we first get on the stage. So then it comes down to, okay, well, what were the findings? What do you have to tell us? Kind of what were your things? We have none. We have no findings to report. So there was no financial statement findings, no federal findings, and then we also do test some Minnesota legal compliance things. So that's like state statutes, making sure that you're in accordance with certain statutes. We had nothing to report. Throughout the audit, we definitely always, in every case, have something that comes up and we're like, oh, I don't know, we need to ask. We asked the team, we were always able to work through it. So that's great news, we were able to work with the team through all of those things. So there can always be things that we talk about, but in this case, there was nothing that rose to the level that we needed to report it. And that's my favorite part of presenting, when I get to say there's no findings. So one of the things that we had to do this year was a new standard implementation, which I love, but not everyone does. So in our world, we follow what's called GASB. Those are the accounting standards that governments follow. This year, there was a new standard we call GASB 96. Essentially, it was kind of like leases for software. It's very complex. We're not going to talk about it a lot, but I wanted to point it out here because what it does is it restates some beginning-of-year numbers. The numbers are like 6.8 million, 2.3 million. Those are big numbers. They're just for financial reporting purposes. They were a standard that you didn't change the way you were doing anything. It was just the way that the standards are accounting for these software leases essentially. So I want to point that out. In case you are reading the 200-page book, you will see language about it. So now we're going to look at some graphs, some colors, some information, where you've been, where you're at. So first of all, is cash and investment. So you can see the cash and investments for the district at the end of 2023 was about 262 million, because that's in thousands. This is not a graph to say where you should be or where you shouldn't be. This is simply to show you where you're at. Cash balance can really vary depending on what you have for payables outstanding at the end of the year, if you've gotten some big receivables in. So nothing concerning, I just wanted to show you what that number looks like at the end of the year. Next up, we're going to talk about the general fund. So the general fund really is kind of the bread and butter of the district, so we're going to spend the most amount of time talking about that fund. I'm going to piggyback right off of what Christopher was saying on ADM. So here is your historic information on ADMs. So we take these numbers from the state reports for ADM SERV, so average daily membership, essentially student count. So when you look at the student count over the last five years, it hasn't changed much. There are small fluctuations, but it hasn't changed much and that drives right into the aids, the federal aids that we look at for the general fund. So this is the numbers page, it's really small, bear with me. So for the general fund, you do a budget, you revise that budget, and then something actually happens for the year. So that's what we're really showing here. So the actual column is kind of the second from the right. It's about 458 million that came in to the district for revenues. That is a positive variance of about 3.5 million, which is 0.7%. Like 3.5 million sounds like a lot, but it's 0.7%. So on that big dollar amount, that is a very close variance. Expenditures were about 464 million. That was a positive variance as well. So you spent a little less than you expected, which is conservative budgeting. You got a little bit more than you expected. So again, conservative budgeting brought you down to the bottom line number of about $91.6 million. Again, that's a big number. We will We will talk about what it looks like in on the next couple of slides, but this is really where the numbers come into play. One of our procedures we do over these numbers is we ask the district, hey, this is a little different than what you budgeted. Why is it that way? And if we don't get explanations for that, then we could potentially have an issue. Through all of our procedures, we were able to talk to the team and got answers for every question that we had. So a positive fund balance, you're nowhere near a negative fund balance, but a positive fund balance is important for the district because it can contribute to a favorable bond rating, you can get some investment income, and then as we all saw through COVID, it provides a little bit of a cushion if you need it. So you I would not recommend that you operate at a zero fund balance. So that's why you want to have a positive. There are a couple of categories for fund balance, which are listed here. I'm not going to go through all of them in detail, but if you want to refer back, this is what they are. So this is the numbers for fund balance, again, for the general fund. So there's a bunch of different categories in here. The top one is non-spendable. That's about 1.8 million. That has to be a certain balance because of certain numbers that are on the financial statements. Then you have a number of restricted amounts, which is about 13.5 million. Those are funds that you have gotten from someone who says you can only spend this for X, and you haven't spent it yet, so it's waiting in the wings for that. A lot of times, that money is from MDE set aside for certain certain things. The next category is assigned. There's three different categories for assigned. That's about 19.5 million. That is designated money that has been set aside by the school for certain things. That's something that can get looked at and make sure that you've got enough funding in there. Maybe you want to reallocate some of it. That's what that number is for. So the the last number is the unassigned number, and that's really the way that we analyze fund balance in the general fund. So unassigned is about 15.5 million, which we'll take to the next page. This is the graphs. So that unassigned number is kind of the leftover. After you take out the things that are already going to be spent on something else, this is the leftover. And you can see the kind of the colors for the different categories for the last five years. What I'm going to do is go ahead a couple more pages to tell you what's a little bit more valuable, but this is all of the categories for it. So then the question that I always get is, well, what should we have? Why? Where should we be? Tell us what we need to have. There really isn't a right or wrong answer for this. The district does have a policy of saying that the minimum unassigned fund balance should be no less than 5% of the annual operating expenditures. So that is kind of the baseline that the district has set up for the for the district. So that's really what you want to follow. If the district feels maybe that's too low, maybe you want to modify, maybe you want to change the language, you can do that through the policy change, but that's where it's at right now. So what that looks like is this graph. So you are above that. What I want to point out is that unassigned fund balance, that's the green one, for '21, '22, and '23, you can see it is decreasing. Nothing that's wrong. You're not below your policy, but I just wanted to point it out, as long as you're aware of it and you kind of know it's there, make sure you're keeping an eye on it. One thing that that came to mind is when we look at that 5%, if you think about, a lot of people think about, oh, is 5% good? Is 10% good? If you think about your personal finances, a lot of personal finance experts will tell you you should have six months of cash in the bank, right? That's kind of their recommendation. Six months would be 50%. So 5% is lower than that, which you would do for personal. Now, I'm not saying that what you do for personal is what you should do for the school, but that's just a way that I can kind of think about, okay, if you have 5%, that's about a half a month. Okay? That's how I can kind of figure out in my mind what those big numbers look like. So that's your general fund. Now we're going to talk about a couple of your other funds. So community service fund is your next one. Here's where it's been for the last five years. This is the ending fund balance in that community service fund. Ended 2023 at about 3.9 million, so jumped up a little bit there. We are seeing across most of my districts that community service funds are getting some activity back after COVID kind of ended, so we're seeing some increases here to cover some of the programs that are happening there. And then the next fund that we're going to talk about is the food service fund. This fund has a little a little red line on it that I will talk about, but this is the same look and feel. So what was the ending fund balance for this fund at the end of the year? Was about 7.9 million. That red line on there is the maximum allowable fund balance per the state of Minnesota for for this fund. Now, we have seen this number for many districts. Their ending fund balance is far above that required maximum for many years because of the money you've been getting from COVID, kind of the rules that are set around federal dollars and food service money and rates and how you have to set those. It's not anything that we're writing a finding for. The district may need to coordinate with MDE and just kind of explain, hey, this is our plan, and this is where we're at. But I will tell you, I would say probably 90% of the districts that I've worked with recently have this exact same thing going on. So it's not alarming. I just wanted to show you what that number looked like. All right. And then the last thing that I have is what's next and other topics. So in the the auditing world, in the government world, there's always something changes. There's some new acts that come out. There's some new credits that come out. We have a lot of different publications and webinars. So if you have questions on, hey, I heard this this credit's coming out, or I heard this thing about GASB, you can always reach out to me. I can get you the information. We've got webinars if you have questions. If you're reading through that big book, that Agfa, and you have questions on what's in there, you give me a call, and I will be happy to talk through it at any point with you. That's kind of what I live and breathe. So with that, is there any questions?
Thank you so much for the report. This is an action item tonight. So before we go into the questions, is there a motion to accept the audit report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin and a second by Bianca. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
Well, what better thing can you get than it was a clean audit?
That's what I'm saying.
That's great. And the stuff, if people wanted to look at these, the 200-page report is online. So is the the shorter report is online.
I believe the district will post it.
It's posted.
And so there's always a lot of information if you want to have some interesting reading. There's lots of information in there about the district. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Have a great night.
Any other questions or comments? Awesome. I just wanted to say, too, thank you very much for presenting it in this manner as well. Just for everyone that doesn't understand, we have a lot of, we have a large budget, a lot of public dollars. The audit is one of those tools that come in to say that, yes, we are spending our public trust wisely. And to get have an audit come in and say, nothing to report, is the best you can get? Additionally, taking a 200-page, crazy, thick report and putting it into an easy, consumable presentation like this for the community and for the board, just very much appreciated. So thank you. So we have a motion to accept by Suchin, second by Bianca. All those in favor of approving or accepting the audit report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next, I would like to welcome our deputy general counsel, Adam Wattenbarger, to the podium to go over our resolution canvassing returns of votes for school district general election.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the school board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm Adam Wattenbarger. I'm the deputy general counsel here at District 196. I come before you tonight requesting the school board's approval of a resolution canvassing the returns of votes of the school district general election. As you know, on November 7th, 2023, District 196 held a general election asking residents to vote for four of the seven at-large positions on the school board due to the upcoming expiration of four school board terms of office on the first Monday in January. By law, after a school district election, the school board is required to canvass the returns and to declare the results of the election. So the resolution before the board formally canvases the returns of the votes and declares the results of the election. As specified in the abstract of votes and summary report that are attached to the resolution, a total of 21,911 voters of the district voted in this election. As Mary noted at the top of the meeting, Jackie Magnussen, Corey Johnson, Suchan Isaacs, and Anna Williams are the four candidates who received the largest number of votes. So congratulations to the winning candidates. As a result, they are elected to four-year terms beginning on New Year's Day, January 1st, 2024. This resolution also authorizes the steps necessary to execute a certification of election activity and to certify the results of the election. So with that, I request the board approve the resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is another action item tonight. So is there a motion to accept the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Heard a motion by Bianca and a second from Sakoudin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Question? Come up to the, could you come up to the podium, sir, so we can hear your question? And if you could just start by stating your name and connection to the district, and then, yeah, feel free to ask your question.
Do I just say my first name, or do I say my last name as well? Or does it matter?
It's up to you.
Okay. My name is, my name is Sam, and I'm just here for a really simple reason, and that is to, I'd like to contest the results of the election, and I just want to count the votes. I just want to count, count all the votes.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. I do believe all the votes have been counted. Adam, is there anything from a legal perspective from counting the votes that you maybe want to add? But I believe we've counted, I'll correct the early votes. Everything's been counted correctly?
Yeah. So, I mean, in terms of a request for a member of the public to hand count the votes, that's that's not something that we'll be able to grant by law. The ballots are have to be kept sealed and unopened, except for certain official procedures, like an official recount or secretary of state audit. But it's not something that we'd be able to authorize an individual member of the public to come count. You know, I'll just say for the record that I feel confident in the validity and accuracy of the results. We certainly, we test the all the machines that we use prior to them being used in any precinct, you know, run through a whole bunch of ballots and make sure that they're spitting out the correct results and reporting the correct results. And so we went through that whole process, checked the returns against the numbers that the county has posted, and, you know, we had a good team of experienced election judges that were working on this. So I feel good about the process and the accuracy of the results. I hope that most of the community does as well, but I certainly respect the opinion there, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, there was a motion by Bianca, second by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. And Adam, if you'd like to stay up at the podium to go over our resolution authorizing the issuance of certificate of election.
Yeah. So good evening again. I come before you now just requesting approval of a resolution authorizing issuances of the certificates of election. After a school board canvases the returns, the school board has to authorize the issuance of certificates of election, which act as formal documents certifying that the candidate has been elected to the school board for the stated term. So this resolution formally authorizes the board clerk to execute certificates of election to Jackie Magnussen, Corey Johnson, Suchan Isaacs, and Anna Williams. The resolution also authorizes the steps necessary to deliver those certificates at the appropriate time and to enclose a form of acceptance of office and the oath. So with that, I request the board approve the resolution and happy to answer any questions again.
This is another action item. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Joel and a second by Sakoudin. All right. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? We have a motion by Joel, second by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to welcome our director of human resources, Shelley Munson, to the podium to go over collective bargaining agreement with bus drivers, chaperones, and crossing guards.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'll be referring to the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's bus drivers, chaperones, and crossing guards. These employees, represented by Service Employees International Union, or SEIU Local 284, ratified the proposed working agreement on October 10th. I will highlight the terms of the two-year agreement for you. There is an increase to each step on the salary schedule by 3.4% in the first year and by 76 cents an hour in the second year. Effective July 1, 2023, the stipend for our standby bus drivers will increase by 25 cents an hour. Effective July 1, 2023, employees will have a common longevity date of July 1. There is no change to the longevity pay amounts in this working agreement. The district contribution to health insurance increases by 10.5% in the first year and by 5% in the second year. Effective September 1, 2023, sick leave hours will be allocated based on bid routes for the current year. This change will help us comply with the new earned sick and safe time law that goes into effect on January 1, 2024. There will be no increase to the district contribution to the matching 403B plan during the term of this contract, and there were other minor language modifications and clarifications. The total of the new costs during the term of this agreement are within the parameters you set forth. In closing, I'd like to also recognize the work that both bargaining teams put in over the course of eight meetings to achieve this agreement. On behalf of administration, I'd recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement that I just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Shelley. This is an action item tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved. Second.
Heard a motion by Suchin, second by Jackie. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, I have a motion by Suchin, second by Jackie. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you very much, Shelley. Next, I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for our clerical and secretarial employees appreciation week.
Okay, thank you. So whereas there are more than 875 clerical and secretarial employees who work in independent school District 196 on a full or part-time basis, whereas our clerical and secretarial employees fill a variety of important positions in the district, including but not limited to school and building secretaries, bookkeepers, accounting clerks, receptionists, computer clerks, instructional clerks, paraprofessionals, library and media clerks, behavior support clerks, teaching assistant clerks, basic skills clerks, and instructional clerks. Whereas our clerical and secretarial employees provide valuable support to help teachers teach and students learn. Whereas our clerical and secretarial employees provide services essential for the day-to-day operations of our schools and district, and whereas our clerical and secretary employees work with students, families, teachers, and administrators as a vital part of the District 196 team. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 196, Rosemont Apple Valley, Eagan Public Schools, hereby extends its appreciation to clerical and secretarial employees for the vital role they play in educating, developing, and inspiring students for lifelong success, and declares November 13 through 17, 2023, to be Clerical and Secretarial Employees Appreciation Week in District 196.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
A motion by Jackie and a second by Bianca. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Awesome. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. And if you just want to go right into our next resolution.
So we have another appreciation for our maintenance support employees. Whereas there are more than 200 maintenance support employees who work in independent school District 196 on a full or part-time basis. Whereas our maintenance support employees fill a variety of important positions in the district, including custodial aides, custodians, warehouse checkers, groundskeepers, truck drivers, mechanical specialists, building chiefs, and head groundskeepers. Whereas our maintenance support employees help to provide a safe, secure, and clean environment conducive to teaching and learning. Whereas our maintenance support employees help protect the community's investment